Good evening. I now call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, April the 9th, 2018. And we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my pleasure to introduce Pastor Rick Grover from East 91st Street Christian Church. Wonderful church where I have many, many memories, rededicating my life, meeting, marrying, and bearing my late wife, and dedicating my son. So without further ado, Pastor Rick Grover.
Would you join me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, I thank you for these men and women who serve the people of this great city. Thank you for their service and sacrifice. Thank you for their willingness to take on a task that's not always easy and often receives more complaints than gratitude. But I pray for their meeting tonight, for their deliberations, for a healthy debate, for wisdom as they make decisions. May they know that there are many silent prayers that are offered on their behalf by your children all throughout this city. And whatever they face, may they do so with courage. Whatever their path, may they walk it with fortitude. Whatever their course of actions, may they follow through with determination and servanthood. And may they act justly, love mercy, and walk humbly before you. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. And now would you join me in our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are 22 counselors present, and Counselors Clay, McHenry, and Ray have asked to be excused for this evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors.
Mr. President.
Counselor Fister.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize Pastor Tim Lindsay and his compatriot Matt Barnes, who are in the -- Tim is in the audience tonight. They have graciously consented to come before every council meeting for a prayer caucus that's open to every counselor and every person that works in the building, and even if you don't work in the building and you want to come, you're welcome. So before every council meeting at 5:00, we have a prayer caucus in room 241, so come see us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize my oldest daughter, who was part of the state champion team, and Raquel Simpson. She's got a twin sister. Raquel, are you here? Are you staying? So everybody can wave and see you. She's my heart.[247.51][247.51](APPLAUSE). Mr. President, the reason she's my heart is because she's a special ed teacher out there at Warren High School, and that's special. That's very, very, very special to me. Thank you.
Counselor Coats.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't -- well, I know they're not here, but they may be watching at home tonight. I'd like to recognize my parents, Dave and Nancy Coats, who are today celebrating their 52nd wedding anniversary.[276.83][276.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize residents of the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association and surrounding members of that neighborhood.
Counselor Cordy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Rich Shepler, the principal at Warren Central High School. And Rich, Mr. Shepler played football with my husband in high school at Warren Central, what, maybe 15 years ago, Rich? 20?
Twenty.
Okay. Thanks for coming.[327.77][327.77](APPLAUSE).
Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge a former City-County counselor and current head of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library, Ms. Jackie Needes.[343.03][343.03](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge we're doing several special resolutions for Warren Central High School tonight, so all students, staff, parents, and community members here to support Warren Central tonight, please stand up.[365.41][365.41](APPLAUSE).
Counselor Gray.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce a lady that's been a longtime Warrior out here for the people. She and I have had some real good battles. I've been with her and against her, but we're still very good friends, Ms. Ruth Hayes.[397.53][397.53](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman, Mr. President. Ms. Saban Martin and Ms. Dana Black, would you please stand, please? Glad to see both of you.[419.22][419.22](APPLAUSE).
All right, very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, April 9th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. The purpose of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, March 16th, 2018, a copy of a notice, a public hearing on proposal numbers 90, 91, and 101, 2018. Said hearing to be held on Monday, April 9th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the public assembly room of the City-County Council, of the City-County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and the Indianapolis Star, Monday, April 2nd, 2018, a copy of a legal notice, General Ordinance, of General Ordinance, number 17, 2018. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, clerk of City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the City -- to the clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal Ordinance, number 3, General Ordinance, number 17 and 18, Special Resolution Numbers 5 and 6, Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is appointment of senior staff. Chief Financial Officer Bart Brown, Assistant Clerks Angela Gonzalez and Yolanda Winfield. Counsel Johnson, if you don't mind, if you could read the minutes from the Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Public Policy Committee met on Tuesday, April 3rd, to review the reappointment of senior staff and the appointment of a new senior staff member. On the reappointment of senior staff, actually first, with consent, I'd like to take both of these together, if that's fine. Reappointment of senior staff included Assistant Clerk Angie Gonzalez and Chief Financial Officer Bart Brown. Mrs. Gonzalez stated that she's been with the council since 1995 and still finds it challenging, hoping that the council will consider her reappointment. And Counsel McQuillan, as he often does, asked if she lives in Marion County. She agreed. Ms. Gonzalez said that she does still reside in Marion County in District 12, which is a great one. Mr. Brown stated that he enjoyed his job immensely, and the counselors have been delighted to work for him, and he hopes he continues to do so. Counsel Gray moved, seconded by Counselor McHenry, to send the reappointment to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 8 to 0. On the appointment of senior staff, Assistant Clerk Yolanda Winfield, Ms. Winfield said that she was learning a lot in her new position, happy to be in the job, and hopes that she can be of service to the council. Counsel Gray moved, seconded by Counselor McQuillan, to send the appointment to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right. We'll actually be taking this by a roll call vote. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? The next item on our agenda is adoption of an agenda. The next item on our agenda is approval of the journals.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. On the agenda, isn't proposal number 89 out of order?
I do believe so. I do believe so.
It's not. So...
Please.
Mr. B. Sickers is like doing like this, like he...
All right.
And so I just thought that it should be under public hearing, since the other two proposals are under public hearing.
Thank you. Typically, the Section 108 loans do not require a public hearing, but two of them do this time, because the city is actually expending the funds through that tax secret financing. So that's the difference for those. So we had to have a public hearing for those two particular, but normally we don't for Section 108.
Does that help? It's good for all of us. All right, thank you, and thank you, Counselor Lewis. The next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for March the 12th, 2018. Do I have consent? We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. The first item on the agenda is proposal number 136, introduced by Counselors Cordy, Jackson, Ray, Johnson, Simpson, and Evans, recognizing the Warren Central Warrior Girls' Basketball Team as the 2017-18 IHSAA Class 4A Girls' Basketball State Champions.
The boys lost the Carmels. I'm gonna hit Tim on that one.[783.13][783.13](LAUGHING).
Come around here.
Around the side.
Good job, Lindsay. So proud of you.
Thank you.
Warren Central is definitely in the house tonight. We're gonna... Woo![826.01][826.01](APPLAUSE). Our school, yeah. We made history this year with the boys, girls, and the special needs. We're gonna start out with the girls first. This is a special -- oh, I want to also point out that Ben Davis didn't have a team this year, so that's why Counselor Evans has agreed to step in.
More than gracious.
Anyway, moving on, this is a special resolution recognizing the Warren Central Warrior Girls' Basketball Team as the 2017-2018 IHSAA Class 4A Girls' Basketball State Champs. Woo![864.57][864.57](APPLAUSE).
Whereas the Warren Central High School Girls' Basketball Team's journey to the state championship title has been aptly referred to as a Cinderella story. The Lady Warriors come from zero -- came from zero wins in 2013, three wins in 2015, 500-win-loss records in 2016, 2017, and an unranked finish to the 2018 season with a record of 13 to 7, to fight their way to the Indiana High School Athletic Association's Class 4A State Championship.
Whereas the Warriors... I gotta get this a little closer.[908.13][908.13](LAUGHING). Whereas the Warriors defeated Lawrence North, Herod and Christian, and North Central in the sectional by the closing -- by a close overtime win over Brownsburg, defeated the top-ranked Pike Team in the region. Their win over Befford North Lawrence in the semi-state led them to the state championship game against Zionsville on Friday, the 24th, 2018, where they again came out 50 to 46. And whereas...
Counsel Jackson, those are fighting words now. The West Side is happy to support Warren Central. It's always nice when a Marion County school takes out a school from a different county, so I'm more than happy, and I'll even elaborate more at the next one.[964.73][964.73](LAUGHING). Whereas the championship game came down to a slight two-point lead in the last 20 seconds, with Zionsville unable to make a play, resulting in Warren's Shayla Beeler hitting two crucial free throws with a game-high of 21 points to seal the win. And whereas, in his third season as head coach, coming from a position as a junior varsity coach for the boys program, Stacy E. Mitchell became the first African-American coach to win a girls' basketball state championship. And whereas, following the championship game, senior Mairee Bell received the 2018 Class 4A Patricia L. Roy Mental Attitude Award, an award that is presented annually to a senior player in each classification who demonstrates excellence in mental attitude, scholarship, leadership, and athletic ability. Counsel Jackson.
Thank you.[1014.13][1014.13](LAUGHING). Whereas the championship Cinderella team includes members Shayla Beeler, Kasia Tally, Mairee Bell, Melody Johnson, Sidney Dodd, Trinity McLendon, Alasia Davis, Trinity Rainey, Janae Wright, Kayla Tally, oh, Coach, excuse me, Kayla... Oh, it is Kayla Tally. Malaysia Mitchell, and Laurenaina Daly, under the direction of head coach Stacy Mitchell and assistant coaches Charminique Stallworth, Damon Boyd Senior, Bree Jones, Sarah Wagner, Erin Neff, Raquel Simpson, and Bruce Dunston, with the aid of the student manager Cassandra Antoinette Carter, and the support of Superintendent Dina Cushenberry, Principal Rich Shepler, Athletic Director Marquise Clayton, and Girls' Athletic Director Susan Downey, and now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana.
Section 1. The Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the Warren Central High School Girls' Basketball Team as the 2017-2018 IHSAA Class 4A Girls' Basketball State Champions. Section 2. The council congratulates the players, coaches, and staff on an incredibly successful season and wishes them continued success in their future endeavors, both collectively and individually. Section 3. The mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. Section 4. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC And, Mr. President, I so move.
Second. The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries. Back to the speakers.
And with your permission, I'd like to introduce a couple of people and let Mr. Shepler and the coach say a few words. Is that okay, Mr. President? Okay. First, I would be remiss if I did not recognize my coworkers, the school bus drivers who every game they drove these kids, and I did that with the boys at Creston. Before I became a counselor, I drove four of those championship boys to every away game, and it meant so much to me. So therefore, I would like to introduce Raven Henry.
Come on, get a key. Thank you for what you do.
I'd like to recognize Kelly Reed and Joy Lewis. Thanks for getting these kids to the games. Mr. Shepler, can you say a few words?
Please. First and foremost, thank you so much for allowing us to showcase the wonderful young ladies and gentlemen that are gonna be coming up here shortly. There's a saying, "Do what you love, and you never have to work a day in your life." And working with these young people each and every day, I'll never have to work a day in my life. I have the best profession around. And working with these adults, head coach Stacy Mitchell and his staff, being the first gentleman, African-American gentleman, to win the state basketball girls' championship, that's incredible, that's amazing. And what he does for us, and what these girls have done for us in our township, our school, our community, is second to none. I can't thank them enough. So thank you so much for allowing us to be here before you tonight.[1249.13][1249.13](APPLAUSE).
Okay, I wasn't prepared to talk, so I'm gonna go from my heart. I just wanna say thanks to everyone. This is extremely awesome. I mean, I am a... I can't put words to it. I'm so proud of our girls and our boys, our community, our teachers, our administrators. We had tremendous support from day one, you know, before all this TV and all the stuff that we get now after we won the state championship. We were getting support from our administrators and our teachers and our athletic directors, so I want to make sure and thank them. We have some great coaches on staff who are very good and help us out and support us, and we have really, really excellent student athletes, okay, who are excellent on the court, but they're also excellent in the classroom, okay? Every time I speak about these girls, I make sure and mention this, they carry a team GPA of a 3.2. I think that's pretty great.[1310.01][1310.01](APPLAUSE). So these young ladies will be successful on the court, but they'll also be successful after high school and after college, in whatever career they choose. Thank you.
If you didn't get a key, let me know.[1335.13][1335.13](APPLAUSE).
Oh, I'm sorry. Run, move out her way.
Yeah.[1339.13][1339.13](LAUGHING).
She walks by my...
The next item... The next item on our agenda is proposal number 137, introduced by Counselors Cordy, Jackson, Ray, Johnson, and Evans, recognizes the Warren Central Warrior Boys' Basketball Team as the 2017-18 IHSAA Class 4A Boys' Basketball State Champions.
Let's go, boys, and coaches.
Coaches, clap, back up. Yep. Same time.
And a special shout-out to Jalen Stamps and David Bell, Tate, and the other Jalen, Jalen Moore. He used to have his mom on speed dial.[1389.13][1389.13](LAUGHING). Boy, you guys had some close calls, man. My heart sometimes during those games. Okay, we all up here? All right. Okay, this is a special resolution recognizing the Warren Central Warrior Boys' Basketball Team as the 2017-2018 IHSAA Class 4A Boys' Basketball State Champions.
Whereas, in the last two seasons, Warren Central High School's Boys' Basketball Team has recorded 53 wins and three losses, setting an Indiana High School Athletic Association state record in 2017-28 season. Y'all should clap right there. Woo![1452.63][1452.63](APPLAUSE). With 32 wins and zero losses on their way to capturing the school's first boys' basketball state title, this was the best record for an undefeated state champion in history, with the historic 1956 Crispy Addicts and the 1969 Washington Teams sharing the previous record, 31 to 0. And whereas...
Whereas their impressive season accomplishments included winning the Manuel Holiday Shootout, the Noblesville Holiday Tournament, the Metropolitan Interscholastic Conference, and for the first time in 18 years, the Marion County Tournament, and the IHSAA Sectionals and Regionals, finally culminating in the IHSAA Semi-State and State Championship for the first time in school history. And whereas, the Warren Central Boys' Basketball Team is currently ranked number two in the United States, according to USA Today, and their varsity head coach, Chris Byers, has been selected...[1515.13][1515.13](APPLAUSE). I should stop, right? That's right.[1518.13][1518.13](APPLAUSE). I should've stopped. She was pick and rolling me here. I was trying to get out of the way. Has been selected as the Marion County Boys' Basketball Hedge Coach of the Year for the second year in a row.[1531.41][1531.41](APPLAUSE).
Boy, this is so exciting for me to say this.[1542.51][1542.51](LAUGHING). So I know a lot of you who know me say, "What is that West Side Ben Davis guy? Why is he supporting this?" One, at Ben Davis, we can always appreciate great championship teams, and these are some great teams. But one of the bigger things I'm so excited about, this team beat Carmel High School twice.[1563.83][1563.83](APPLAUSE). And I know Mayor Joe Hogsett is excited to tell Tim Moriarty that every day that he sees him. So let's continue on. Whereas the Warriors defeated Arsenal Tech, North Central, and Lawrence Central in the sectionals, followed by wins over Ben Davis, Terre Haute South in the regionals. Their last second shot in Nellbider gave them the win over New Albany in the semifinals, leading to the state championship game against Carmel on March 24th, 2018, where they came out on top, 54 to 48. And whereas, proving themselves great athletes, were able to work together as a team to accomplish an incredible feat. Team members also maintained their educational goals and excelled scholastically with a 3.7 grade-point average. And whereas...[1617.13][1617.13](APPLAUSE).
I know all these names. Whereas, the Warriors marched into victory with team members Sean Beeler, Antoine Cushenberry, Dean Tate, Jesse Bingham, Jalen Moore, Joe Rush, David Bell, Jacoby Robinson, Jalen Stamps, Malik Stanley, Jamison Smith, and Krishawn Brown, under the direction of head coach Chris Byers, assistant coaches Deandre Brock, Garrett Wayne Gar... Okay, didn't know all of my guests. Fred Murray, Azelle Jones, and the aid of Pam Schroder and Courtney Burchett, and added the support of Superintendent Dr. Dina Cushenberry, Principal Rick Shepler, Athletic Director Marquise Clayton. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, Section 1. The City of Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the Warren Central High School Boys' Basketball Team as the 2017-2018 IHSAA Class A for Boys' Basketball State Champions. Woo! Section 2. The council congratulates the players, coaches, and staff on an incredibly successful season and wishes them continued success in all their future endeavors, both collectively and individually. Section 3. The mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature. Section 4. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you. And with all that said, I'd like to ask Coach Byers to say a couple words.
And Coach, as you come up, can you say something about all the boys are excellent, but about Dean Taylor, Tate, because he won two dual honors that hasn't been done since 2007? Can you say a little bit about him? I'll let you speak first, and then can somebody speak about Dean Tate?
Well, on behalf of the Boys' Basketball Team, I'd like to thank the City-County Council for inviting us and taking the time to recognize us. As you can see here, we've got a great group of young men, as we do, as well as we do young ladies, and we just appreciate being here. Thank you.
Mr. Clayton.
Just to echo what Mr. Shepler and Coach Byers, Coach Mitchell said, it's such an honor to be in front of this group. I know you guys have some serious heavy lifting that goes on here, and just to take the time out to appreciate and recognize awesome kids from the east side of Indianapolis that are often told what they can't do, a community that's often told what they can't do, and not only did they prove themselves, but they were perfect at the same time. And we have many outstanding people here, but... were perfect at the same time. And we have many outstanding people here, but as you mentioned, Dean Tate Senior is not only, he's been selected as an Indiana All-Star for football, but he's also been selected as an Indiana All-Star for basketball. And that is an accomplishment that is worth noting, because that hasn't happened too many times in the history of this great state. So, if we could give him a hand. And what I will leave you with tonight is, we have a saying on the east side of Warren Central, and it's called, "Can't fold, won't fold." And I want everyone to really pull back and understand what that means. That is so representative of us eastsiders. And through all the tragedy and all the adversity that we go through, we stay together, we come together, we believe in each other, and we don't ever give up. We don't fold. So, again, thank you for this opportunity, and please enjoy the rest of your evening.
Does everybody get a key? If you need more keys, let me know.
Counselor Gray.
I'd just like for them to all to recognize one of their strong alumnis for Warren Township over there, Deputy Moore. He's a very proud Warren Township. Played football for him for many years. He was always too short, though.
All right. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 138, introduced by councilors Cordy, Jackson, Ray, and Johnson, recognizes the Warren Central High School Special Olympics Basketball Champions.
Okay, we have just a few of the members on here this evening. The rest are at a competition at Ben Davis. So, if they would please come up. Okay, number three. This is a special resolution recognizing the Warren Central High School Special Olympics Basketball Champions. Whereas, Warren Central High School began offering Special Olympics basketball during 2015-2016 school year for students and adults in Warren Township area. The program grew one team that rookie year to two teams and 20 athletes participating the following year. This season included 50 athletes, developing one traditional team, students with disabilities, two unified teams, students with and without disabilities, and a skills group. And...
Whereas, the eight-week Special Olympics season includes games between area sites and then a sectional tournament, where anyone placing first at sectionals moves on to state to compete for the gold medal. Two of Warren Central High School's central unified teams and two skilled team members won their respective specialist sectionals and advanced to the state to play for gold medals. And whereas...
The traditional team, Warren Central Team White, lost by only 1 point to the Marion County Northeast Falcons at sectionals to earn a second-place ribbon. Warren Central Team Black, one of the unified teams, won by 1 point to Marion County West Jazz at sectionals to move on to the state to play for gold. And Warren Central Team Gold, the other unified team, who finished the season undefeated, handedly won their sectionals game against the Washington Township Panthers, 49 to 28, to also advance to the state at the Ben Davis High School to play for gold against Warren Central Team Black. And whereas, with two Warren Central teams advancing to play for gold and silver at state, the state competition unfortunately was canceled due to snow, and the unified teams will have to reschedule the competition. And whereas, two members of Warren Skills Team, Brandon Callen and Vince Goodman, placed first in their divisions and moved on to state at Ben Davis. Other Skills Team members included Sarah Baxter, Emma Casares, Kristy Gray, Scott McAllen, Chris Odom, Tyrese Pepper, and James Thomas.
Whereas, Warren Team Black was coached by Amanda Westerfield and Cheryl Ann Pecking Pol, and consists of team members Elijah Erby, Dewayne Linwood, Malik Stewart, Michael Miles, Jordan Warren, Tajia Penn, and Lawrence Holton. Warren Teams White and Gold were coached by Dina Condra and Samantha Schorzen. Team White includes team members Mark Pettigo, Brianna Waymeyer, Cody Egner, Kim Garrison, Andrea Bride, Tyrese Cook, Tyler Clark, Matthew Gagnar, Jalique Evans, Lazario Alea, and Nathan Cobb. Team Gold is made up of team members Brett Purit, Hayden Orr, Corey Yeerman, and Jamie Hines, Ayana Clark Bennett, Lejay, Burke Stevens, Allison Condra, Casey Matthews, and Sarah Condra. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the Warren Central High School Special Olympics Basketball Champions. Section 2, the council congratulates the players, coaches, and staff on an incredibly successful season and wishes them continued success with the Special Olympics basketball program. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join us in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore, and he has. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Therefore, going was passed by the City-County Council on this ninth day of April 2018. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." Motion carries back to the speakers.
And here's the coach to say a few words.
I just want to say thank you again for having us, and I'm very proud of these boys, and thank you for supporting both of our teams and supporting inclusion overall with Special Olympics. We've had a really great year. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Evans, what happened to the Special Olympics? You didn't want to read? Special Olympics?
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 139, introduced by councilors Cordy, Jackson, Ray, and Johnson, and it recognizes the Warren Central High School Winter Guard.
Mr. President, we're gonna have to make a motion to move this to a different date, postpone to a different date.
All right. Well, we'll put it on. Very good.
Okay.
Yes. All those in favor, aye. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 140, introduced by councilors Gray, Jackson, Oliver Simpson, and Fister, and honors telecommunications, more commonly referred to as public safety dispatchers.
This afternoon, we're going to give a special resolutions to the dispatchers, public safety dispatchers, better known as telecommunications. For you who have never worked in public safety on the emergency side, such as I have, you cannot appreciate the job that these telecommunications do, because without them, your lives, your homes, and whatever would be in great danger. They're the ones who lead us to the fire, lead us to the accident, and sometimes they lead us a little bit past. But, overall, we do a good job, and here tonight, we're going to recognize them. City-County Council, special resolution number 11, 2018, a special resolution honoring telecommunications, more commonly referred to as public safety dispatchers. Whereas, telecommunications are the vital link between citizens in need of public safety assistance and the response necessary to mitigate the incident. And...
Whereas, the fire and EMS telecommunications are also specially trained to administer initial emergency medical care to patients who need assistance. And whereas, the manner in which a telecommunications handles an incident has great impact on shaping the incident from the beginning of a call through the end of the incident. And whereas, telecommunications regularly work nights, weekends, and holidays for minimum pay, yet remain dedicated to ensuring that each citizen receives the best possible care. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana.
Section 1, Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the hard work and dedication of these professional public safety dispatchers. Section 2, the council heartily congratulates all public safety telecommunications. My tongue does not work like theirs do. They are just amazing. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code. And, Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Motion carries back to the speakers.
I've not been on the fire side like Counselor Gray has, but I've been a spectator up close and personal. And I am totally amazed at the things that these dispatchers do. They hear a lot of very hard things. They maintain their composure, and I've been in their office and I see three or four screens in front of them, and they're managing all of them at the same time, and doing it with professionalism and care and compassion and concern. So, this recognition is really due.
We'd like to have a few words from Chief Fred Previn, also known as the Bishop.
Thank you very much, Counsel. We want to recognize, this is Telecommunicators Week, and we recognize a lot of times fire and police officers, but telecommunications don't always get recognized. And we are very thankful for the hard work that they do. That's the first voice you hear and sometimes the last voice you hear. They're hard workers, and we appreciate them. And this week, if you, as much as you can, thank them for the hard work they do. Again, thank you, and we are hiring. If you know anybody that want to be a telecommunications, please tell them we are hiring. Thank you.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this, please.
Thank you very much. That's noted. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 149, introduced by all councilors and recognizes the inspirational and commemorative ceremony held on April 4, 2018, by the Kennedy King Memorial Initiative.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a extra-special special resolution, City-County Special Resolution Number 12, a special resolution recognizing the... This is a special resolution recognizing the inspirational and commemorative ceremony held on April 4, 2018, for the Kennedy King Memorial Initiative. Whereas, on April 4, 2018, a bipartisan group of national, state, and local dignitaries gathered at the Landmark for Peace Memorial in Indianapolis near 17th and Broadway to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the assassination of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and the speech Senator Robert F. Kennedy delivered that night in Indianapolis passionately calling for peace and urging unity, racial reconciliation, in a response to that violent act. And whereas, the assembled group included U.S. Representative John Lewis, who worked side-by-side with Dr. King for a decade, and who was with Robert Kennedy in Indianapolis on the evening 50 years ago, and traveled back to Indianapolis for this historic occasion to inspire our citizens, young and old, with these words, "We are all one people. We are all one family. We all live in the same house." And whereas...
And whereas, Congressman Lewis was joined by Carrie Kennedy, daughter of Robert F. Kennedy, Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, Indianapolis Mayor Joseph Hogsett, and members of Indiana's congressional delegation, including Senators Joe Donnelly and Todd Young, U.S. Representatives Andre Carson and Susan Brooks, who announced that their efforts had led the U.S. President to sign the Kennedy King National Commemorative Site Act of 2018 into law, which adds the 1968 speech site to the National Civil Rights Network. And whereas, Ms. Kennedy reiterated the message her father first spoke that fateful night in Indianapolis, emphasizing that what we need in the United States is not violence and lawlessness, but love and a sense of compassion towards those who are suffering, whether they be white or black. And whereas, the focus of the April 4, 2018 commemoration was the vision and values Kennedy and King shared, a concern for justice and equal treatment, and the courage to speak truth to power no matter what the cost. And whereas...
In the words of Dr. King, "This body seeks to embrace the simple art of living together as brothers and sisters." And in the words of Senator Robert Kennedy, "Find in our own midst and in our own hearts the leadership of human purpose." Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council recognizes the inspirational and commemorative ceremony held on April 4, 2018, celebrating the Kennedy-King Memorial Initiative and promoting unity within the city of Indianapolis, and it was an awesome celebration. Section 2, the council also recognizes the sacrifices of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Robert F. Kennedy, who fought for equality and unity across the country and are commemorated by this historic landmark. Section 3, the council further recognizes the remarkable work of Kennedy-King Memorial Initiative Board members, staff, sponsors, and volunteers that made the momentous events of April 4, 2018 possible. If you are one of those people, you're here, can you please stand tonight for us, please? Please stand. Just want to make sure. Can you wave your hand? All right. Section 4, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore, which he has. Section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-4-14. This special resolution was sponsored by all councilors and was passed by the City-County Council this ninth day of April 2018. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." Motion carries back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, this entire event was no small feat, and if you were there, you left with some incredible memories outside of the frigid weather. It was a testament to how important this was to the people of Indianapolis and to all those who traveled near and far. So, with that, I'd like to have come to the podium, State Representative Greg Porter, who was on the committee as well.
Thank you, councilors. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the KKMI Board, all our stakeholders, we want to thank you for this resolution. You know, 50 years ago, five days, changed the course of history here within the United States and here in the great city of Indianapolis. Our members are here with us this evening. We had a great event. We had wonderful partners from the Airport Authority to the parks, Recreation Department, Indy Parks, Indigo, who opened up their bus line to bring people to the park that day, as well as the library, who bought, purchased Congressman Lewis's books and gave them to all the students that were there. And there were at least 150 students there that day. This is what Indianapolis is about. This is when we come together and look at where we are as a great city, as we talk about one city, as we continue to reach here in Indianapolis for diversity and inclusion. This is events like this that makes it important for us to not talk about us as adults, but leave a legacy for our children to begin to... but leave a legacy for our children, to begin to grow them, to create a pipeline of civility within our community. I would be remiss if I didn't possibly think about these individuals. Julia Carson, Larry Conrad, Bill Crawford, Amos Brown, Mark St. John, Greg Perry. Those are individuals that helped us get to this point. We standing here, yes, we get the recognition and we get to say yes, but there are individuals who paved the way, like which happened 50 years ago, five days ago. Paved the way for us to be where we are today. And as we think about that, we look at the history, and we can't forget the Indiana Historical Society for everything that they've done with the display at the airport and the new monuments that's at the Peace Memorial. And I encourage you to go down to your park and look at that monument and what we've done at Martin Luther King Jr. Park. It is a sight not only just for us, but all the world to see. And ladies and gentlemen, not only Indianapolis, but the world will see, has seen, what that park means to all of us. Ladies and gentlemen, councilors, thank you so much for this wonderful resolution.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 395, Refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take Proposal Numbers 395 and 396 together. Proposal Number 395 confirms the mayor's appointment nomination of Ann Nobles to the City County Ethics Commission. This is a reappointment. Counselor Johnson moves, seconded by Counselor McQuillan, to send Proposal Number 395 to the full council. The due pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Proposal Number 396 reappoints Barbara Howard to the Alcoholics Beverage Board of Marion County. Counselor Johnson moves, seconded by Counselor McQuillan, to send Proposal Number 396 to the full council. The due pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll now proceed. All right, we'll now proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 93, Refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 93, 2018, appoints Alonzo Anderson to the Juvenile Detention Center Advisory Board. Mr. Anderson stated that he is a native of Indianapolis, growing up on the South Side. He's also a firefighter with Monroe Township and a financial banker with Fifth Third Bank, who specializes in financial literacy and budgeting. Mr. Anderson also stated that he is a board member for Ravenswood Hope, Inc., which is a drug intervention and rehabilitation program for our city. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Scales, to send Proposal 93 to the full council. The due pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of 10 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll now proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Fanning. Very good. The vote carries 22 to zero. The next item on our agenda is Introduction to Proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 111, introduced by Counselors Simpson and Corte, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, authorizes the issuance of economic development revenue, economic development revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1 million, which proceeds will serve as a loan to the Marion County Agriculture and 4-H Club Fair Association, Incorporated, for the purpose of financing various capital improvements, renovations, and equipping projects at the Marion County Fairgrounds. Proposal Number 112, introduced by Counselor Oliver, referred to the Community Affairs Committee, urges the Indiana General Assembly to support a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. Proposals Number 113 through 115 all refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal Number 113, introduced by Counselor Adamson, appoints Laura T. Garden to the Woodruff Place Economic Improvement Board. Proposal Number 114, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves transfers totaling $1,270,000 to the 2018 budget of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services and the Consolidated County Fund to purchase and equip 50 vehicles. Proposal Number 115, introduced by Counselor Evans, approves the statement of benefits of ISVAL USA, Inc., an applicant for tax abatement for property located in the economic revitalization area. Proposals Numbers 116 and 117 both refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee and were introduced by Councilors Gray, Lewis, McHenry, McQuillan, and Adamson. Proposal Number 116 approves the issuance of general obligation bonds in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million for the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library to fund an integrated, I'm sorry, an integrated library system, automated sorters, startup collection materials for new branches and facility improvement projects. Proposal 117 approves the appropriation of proceeds and investment earnings of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library's general obligation bonds in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million for the purpose of financing all or any portion of the 2018 AHS, ILS, and multifamily improvement project. Proposals 118 and 119 both refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee and were introduced by Counselor Robinson. Proposal 118 amends the code to provide for a Marion Superior Court Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau Non-Reverting Fund. Proposal 119 approves the fee schedule for the Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau adopted by the Marion Superior Court. Proposals Number 120 through 130 all refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal 120, introduced by Counselor Osley, amends the code to add a new section 431-605 to prohibit dockless bike share or higher programs in public right-ofways. Proposal Number 121, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes parking restrictions on East Street and Fort Wayne Avenue in District 17. Proposal 122, introduced by Counselor Feaster, authorizes intersection controls at Farley Drive and 116th Street, I'm sorry, in District 15. Proposal Number 123, introduced by Counselor Oliver, authorizes the removal of parking restrictions on Washington Boulevard between 28th Street and 30th Street in District 9. Proposal Number 124, introduced by Counselor Crider, authorizes intersection controls throughout the Park Place subdivision in District 23. Proposal Number 125, introduced by Counselor Evans, authorizes intersection controls at Dunlap Avenue and Miller Street in District 22. Proposal 126, introduced by Counselor Clay, authorizes intersection controls on Edmondson Avenue between 42nd and 46th Street in District 13. Proposal Number 127, introduced by Counselor Clay, authorizes intersection controls at Harvest Avenue and 34th Street in District 13. Proposal Number 128, introduced by Counselor Westler, authorizes intersection controls at Hillcrest Drive and Hillcrest Court in District 24. Proposal Number 129, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes intersection controls at Keystone Avenue and St. Clair Street in District 17. Proposal Number 130, introduced by Counselor Corte, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Moller Estates at Wildwood Farms in District 18. Proposal Number 131, introduced by Counselor Oliver. Counselor Adamson referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, designate Eastern Avenue between 25th Street and 30th Street as Jenny Yarborough Forster Memorial Way. Proposal Numbers 132 through 135 all refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee and were introduced by Counselor Osley. Proposal Number 132 confirms the mayor's appointment nomination of Craig Hartser to the City County Economic, I'm sorry, the City County Ethics Commission. Proposal Number 133 confirms the mayor's appointment nomination of Matt Koltiver to the City County Ethics Commission. Proposal Number 134 confirms the mayor's appointment nomination of Dennis Lee to the City County Ethics Commission. Proposal Number 135 confirms the mayor's appointment nomination of Cheryl Sullivan to the City County Ethics Commission. Proposal Number 146, introduced by Counselor Crider, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, authorizes the issuance of economic development revenue refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million to refund or purchase in whole or in part the outstanding bonds which were used to refinance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of an apartment complex known as Brookhaven at County Line Apartments, which consists of 271 apartment units located at 940 Wild Indigo Lane in District 23, including refunding costs, and approves the authorization of actions in respect thereto. Proposal Number 147, introduced by Counselor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoints Gregory A. Stowers, Jr. to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal Number 148, introduced by Counselor Maury, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, appoints Blair Engelhardt to the Telecom and Video Services Agency Board. Proposal Number 150, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appoints Alpha Blackburn to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposals Number 141 through 145 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on March 26th. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. Proposal Number 411, refer to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 111, 2018, was referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, authorizing the issue of an economic development revenue bond for the Marion County, oh, is that the one? No, I'm reading the wrong one. 411, sorry, folks.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you. Administration and Finance Committee authorized the issue of a note in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 55 million for the purpose of providing funds to apply to the cost of site preparation, construction, mobilization, and relative engineering, planning, design, and consulting in connection with the proposed Community Justice Campus. And appropriate the proceed thereof, state that the council interests in making a purchase of the land, ratifying the appointment of appraisers with respect to the purchase of the land. State need to state the need to lease certain properties and waive the application of Revised Code, Chapter 186, with respect to the purchased land and to the leased property. At this time, this came before the committee on, let's see, 129, 18. And there was, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Biesecker to give you an understanding of why it's back before us right now. Mr. Biesecker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Proposal Number 411, 2017, was adopted by the council on January 29th, 2018, after a public hearing. However, the required notice of public hearing did not comply with Indiana Code 5314A because it was published in only one newspaper instead of two. Bond Council has now republished the notice of public hearing. So the council will hold another public hearing at this meeting on the portion of Proposal Number 411, which appropriates the proceeds of the notes. The council will then vote on whether to ratify its previous approval of the appropriation portion of Proposal Number 411.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Biesecker. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from fellow councilors? Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Perhaps there's someone here from the administration who could take a quick question on this. Since we passed this originally on January 29th, there've been wars and rumor of wars. Now, there's been note that possibly there could be a tax increase or some kind of a tax piece connected to this now. I just wanted to verify if that's the case or not, or if anything has changed along tax rates in this project, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mallon, thank you.
Sure. Andy Mallon, Corporation Counsel of the City of Indianapolis. The short answer is no. The information we presented at the Admin and Finance hearing in January stands. There's absolutely no planned tax increase as a result. There's no tax rates or anything that have changed. So, no, there's...
Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. If Mr. Mallon could stay here. I understand that the language in question is standard language that goes into these exact type of policies that we come up with.
Right, and just for clarification, the questions that have appeared relative to any sort of...
to any, any sort of fictitious tax increase here is really due to our, the RFP we put out to procure the buildings, right, so to construct, to design build, construct the buildings. And that really just references the obligation of the city in those procurement documents to make, to assure folks that might bid on them that the city's going to be able to afford this project and, and will, so that they have confidence that this, you know, the project's going forward and it's worth their time to bid on it. So it was really a fraction of a sentence that was taken out of context.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mallon. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to proposal 411?
Yes, Larry Vaughn, please. You know, this proposal is redundant. We have had this here before for $55 million issuance of credit from this chamber, but what is really happening now is coming back again. So you're actually appropriating $110 million for this project, which really is unnecessary. The fact is, with the property over at the coke plant, it has, it is not subject to any negotiation as far as sale. When the coke people, Citizens Gas, abandoned that property, it absolutely turned over to the city automatically for not, for any cost, just like when the Simons abandoned Washington Square, just like when they abandoned Lafayette Square. When these corporations have a property that they have no use for any longer and they cannot make any money off of, it automatically turns over to the state or to the city in this case. So to reappropriate those funds, and the funds are not really going to be used for that purpose because they are going to the general fund to shore up sagging budgets because of the misappropriations of funds that have been done in this chambers, then they will be spent by the mayor in any way he wants to spend them. So tonight, we're just going over the same ground and we're reappropriating this money, not an amount of $55 million, but $110 million. You people at home that are watching this, this is what happens when cities get into financial trouble. They keep coming in this chamber begging for money, laughing and grinning about it. They may not know what's going on, but they say that they're trying to negotiate a deal to buy this land over at the coke plant. The city of Indianapolis already owns this, just like the city of Indianapolis. I had a conversation with former President Cochran. He said over 40% of the city, of the land in this city and buildings
Mr. Vaughn.
Have been SG'd to the state because
Mr. Vaughn.
They don't have any
Thank you.
Any interest to make money on it anymore.
Thank you very much. Counselor Johnson.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure that we're clear that everything Mr. Vaughn said was categorically false. We, this is about a notice of public hearing. There was a mistake made in that process, and so it has to come back up for another hearing to make sure that we're doing this completely to the letter of the law. So I just want to make sure again that we're being clear that on, on something like this, that words matter and we need to be sure that we're, we're speaking facts and not fantasies.
Thank you very much. No. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think one important note to drive that, that message home is that this is even the same proposal number as it was before. This is the exact same proposal. There isn't additional amount of money going forward. This is the same proposal put back out because notice wasn't given properly. So they gave the proper notice and we bring it back so that we can do it right by the books.
Any additional comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to the board for our vote. The vote carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 90, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 90 and 91 together.
Consent.
Thank you. On Monday, April 2, 2018, the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee met to hear proposals number 90 and 91. Chair Lewis asked for consent to hear proposals number 90 and 91 together. Consent was given. Director Foltz and Rusty Carr of DMD gave a brief update on the Section 108 Loan Program. Ms. Foltz stated that since the March 5 presentation of, of the Section 108 Loan Program to the committee, they have been very busy, continue to work on projects and making presentations to the Metropolitan Development Commission. The commission approved the program on March 21, 2018. Ms. Foltz went on to share the advantages of the Section 108 Loan Program. The loan program is guaranteed by the Federal Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. It allows cities and states to leverage $1 of CDBG to create $5 of Section 108 borrowing capacity. It allows them to have funds available immediately. It allows them to repay funds over a 20-year term with low market, market interest rates. Proposal number 90 authorizes the Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute debt obligations in an amount not to exceed $4,575, let's try this number again, $4,575,000 to be used for infrastructure improvements to facilitate redevelopment of the central state allocation area as part of the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program and appropriates the proceeds. Proposals number 91 authorizes the Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute debt obligation, obligations in an amount not to exceed 5 million to be used for infrastructure improvements to facilitate development in the Fall Creek Citizen Consolidated Redevelopment Allocation Area as part of the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program and proceeds, and appropriate proceeds. Counselor Adamson moved and seconded by Counselor Wester to send proposals number 90 and 91 to the full council with a due past recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 9 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from fellow counselors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone from the room with an interest in either proposal?
I did attend that meeting and they, they did say that ultimately these loans were backed up by the credit of this city. So if these people that you're giving this infrastructure to, which in my opinion have already been paid for through our appropriations to the public works, but that these loans did somehow fail, that the city would be on the hook. And if any part of them would be liquidated, they said that was the process to be liquidated, just like a couple of years ago, I seen on the point, a big sign, liquidation. So that means liquidation and that means a penny on a dollar. So all these loans, the Section 108 loans or any other loan that are appropriated by the federal government have strings attached, grants, and they all basically amount to tax dollars. So when we're giving out these loans, we're mortgaging a future of this city behind some contingency. So if we keep on doing this, later on, somebody's going to have to pay, and it's only the taxes that the city derives from people in, in, in their, in this city that we pay these loans off, and if they fail, they admit it in the, in the committee that we're on the hook for it. Just look, look, folks, this is, is really a problem that I see for the future of this city. When we're allowing private corporations to come in here and take loans out and use our credit and move it on farther down the road, and any self-respecting corporation is going to use you up, and then if you go back and ask for money or ask them to pay any taxes, they're going to tell you to go pound sand. So we're, we're making a, a big mistake when we front venture capital to private corporations which only are interested in their own survival.
Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, that was categorically incorrect, as Mr. Vaughn will recall. We stated in the committee that these loans are not backed by general obligation of the city of Indianapolis, but by the city's allocation of CDBG dollars, which are dollars that come to the city from the federal government to work on projects that benefit the city, which these projects meet the criteria. So this is not a general obligation guarantee, these are guaranteed by our allocation of CDBG dollars.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else with any additional comments from the audience?
Mr. President.
Counselor Hister.
If I may, and I would like to also clarify, this central state property is in my district. I was also at that meeting and found that beyond the CDBG grants, it's also secured and self-funded by the TIF dollars that are generated in the central state property. The TIF dollars are coming in much higher than expected, so there's, there's just, this is a really, really good project with no, absolutely no deficit to the taxpayers in Marion County. And it will allow infrastructure to be built that will allow new homes on the central state property, which is beautiful. If you haven't been out there, come see it. It's a very worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hister. If there are no other comments from fellow counselors, we'll proceed to the board for Very good. These proposals carry with a vote of 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 101, referred to the committee of the whole. It's a rezoning ordinance for Washington Township District 2, 2730 East 86th Street, 8707 to 8727 Haverstick Road. The council action scheduled for public hearing for, for tonight. The clerk's note indicates that a proposed settlement has been reached between the remonstrators and the petitioner for this rezoning. I would like to add, to call on the, no! I would like to call on the counselor for the district, Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. After several weeks of arduous negotiations, the petitioner and respondents have reached a settlement this past Friday. As soon as it was file stamped with the Department of Metropolitan Development, it was distributed to the impacted neighborhood associations, NORA Community Council, NORA Alliance, and the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association, for then distribution to their subsequent residents and neighbors. The time constraint is by ordinance. We had one council cycle to try to reach a negotiated settlement. And NORA Council, as the primary remonstrator in the case that requested the call down, put together the negotiation team, and I would like to talk about that. The negotiation team was comprised of three people. We got an exception from two to three. Ruth Hayes, the president of NORA Community Council, Jill Salago-Simmel representing the NORA Alliance, and Karen Hamilton, who is the vice president of NORA Community Council currently, and who at the time of the call down on March 12, was the recognized president of Driftwood Hills. She had served for 12-plus years at that time.
Not for the last six.
Individuals in the audience, we have a counselor speaking. When the time for public comment is present, I will ask for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. And by the way, I understand emotions are running high, and I want to thank all of you for being here. It's really important, and I'm glad this neighborhood has such an engaged base. The council has received many emails the past weeks from Driftwood Hills neighbors, I assume many of you in the audience, who have felt excluded from this process. And I want to thank you for reaching out, and I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention and helping me formulate comments that could hopefully be helpful tonight. Driftwood Hills was, the Neighborhood Association was registered with the city of Indianapolis on March 22 of this year, 10 days after the call down happened on March 12, and after the first pre-negotiation meeting between the negotiation team and the developers had actually happened. Karen Hamilton has served her neighborhood tirelessly for 12 years. And she led, in 2005, she led the charge against the kite development, the zoning that led to the commercial development predicament we are in today. So no one has more knowledge of this particular case than Mrs. Hamilton, and NORA Council felt she was a logical choice. Since then, since March 12, Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association has had a leadership change. NORA Alliance was notified of this leadership change on March 13, that there was a new board and new leadership. NORA Alliance immediately, and I have, counselors, you've received all of these emails, and I apologize for the copious amount of information involved in this case, but it's 13 years, 13 years of stuff, and a lot that's happened in the past few months. NORA Alliance, after being notified, immediately asked who they should be discussing this case with from Driftwood Hills, and they received the answer of Ms. Stacy Clark and Ms. Chris Mattel, who had already been included at several points in this process. So NORA Alliance continued to communicate with them throughout this process. Both Ms. Clark and Ms. Mattel were involved in pre-call down meetings on January 20, and then again on March 4, where they, they were joined by Jill Salago-Simmel and James Williams of the NORA Alliance, and Ruth Hayes and Karen Hamilton of NORA Council, and then in Karen's case, also of Driftwood Hills. So the six of, those six individuals met on March 4 and came up with an agreed-upon list of negotiation points to use during the negotiation. Some of those negotiation, well, I'll just go over the, the negotiation points in order of priority, and they have all been sent to the council in the email that Jill Salgo took the notes from that particular meeting. The biggest priority of Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association was a commitment by the developer to only develop the northern portion of the parcel residentially and at the lowest possible density. The number two priority was traffic, to improve area traffic as well as preventing cut-through neighborhood traffic. The number three priority was pedestrian safety, and in particular, signalized crosswalks. And then also very important to the negotiation was drainage, reducing the surface parking, tree conservation and tree mitigation. Those were, those were the priorities. There were also other things such as noise and light pollution. Those points of negotiation, we were the most heavily considered points during the process. And NORA Alliance, this negotiation team worked dozens of tireless hours of tedium, and they, I'm very proud of them. It was a very difficult process. They withstood a lot of political pressure, and they continued to fight for the negotiation points that Ms. Clark and Ms. Mattel set forth. So some highlights of the settlement. You, it's, every, all the information pertaining to this case is on my blog at ColleenFanning.com. You can see the statements from every neighborhood as well as the, the detailed planned commitments that were filed with DMD. So please, get more information, read everything. So some highlights. It does commit the northern part of the property to residential use only. They actually have a maximum density of eight units per acre, which the recommended comprehensive plan recommends eight to 15, so they got the lowest possible density. They reduced the hard surface of the entire project, including taking parking, reducing parking from 363 spots to 300. They reduced the building footprint, which, and changed the shape and design of the building to eliminate kind of a, the northeastern wing of the building to, in order specifically to save a 1.2 acre of wooded land that was planned to be clear cut, cut for a detention pond in the original Alexander Project. And that also allows them to, also allowed them to save over 100 trees that are 10 caliber inches in diameter or greater. And it also created a contiguous tree border along the northeast part of the property that connects to the ravine, and that's very important for many environmental reasons, including drainage. They addressed noise and light pollution through a variety of measures. They incorporated the existing very stringent tree commitments from the approved kite project as well as conserving more heritage and significant trees by saving that contiguous eastern border, which was planned for clear cut. There's measures to protect trees during construction. There's measures that stipulate that any tree mitigation that has to happen within the NORA community and will be, the placement of the trees will be decided by the NORA Council in conjunction with Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association. They will agree on where those trees get mitigated. And they will stay in the NORA community, which is not typical in the past. In the past, trees that have been mitigated in NORA have been placed as far away as the Colts Training Facility on West 56th Street. So this will enable their neighborhood to reap the benefits of that. They also negotiated a two-year warranty for the mitigated trees in terms of health. A Driftwood Hills Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Fund was established that can be used at the discretion of the neighborhood for traffic calming measures, pedestrian safety measures, et cetera, and that, that's a $20,000 blank check, excuse me, $20,000 check to be used at the discretion of the neighborhood leadership. It reduces through traffic into the neighborhood by restricting parking lot traffic to a left turn only out of the development southbound on Haverstick, and then it improves traffic exiting the entire neighborhood with a dedicated turn lane, left turn lane onto 86th Street and a shared right and through, through lane, again, for southbound Haverstick. And we're going to work with the city to make sure we modify the existing signal timing, which has been really problematic since the advent of the ironworks development. We're also going to work with Indigo to try to get that bus stop, get a bump out for the bus stop, so that frequent bus stopping won't continue to congest traffic there. Lastly, I just wanted to say that, you know, this process certainly has been difficult, but this settlement has gained a lot of ground for the neighborhood. And this, the process of a call down is very rare, so there's lots of confusion about how it worked. I'm going to ask Counselor B. Sicker to speak, actually, Mr. President, if, if you would be able to ask Counselor B. Sicker to speak a little bit to the process, since it is so involved, I would appreciate that.
Very good. Counselor B. Sicker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Fanning. Yeah, there is some misunderstanding, I think, on what the purpose of the council staff conference is and how exactly our council rule on rezoning works. Okay, sorry. There is some confusion about, and misunderstanding, I believe, about how our council rule 151-79 works and, and how, and what the purpose of it is. In this case, as Counselor Fanning said, these, these are pretty unusual, but I followed our normal practice, at least in the last six and a half years, and I think well before that, which is that we invite to the preliminary staff conference, which in this case took place last Thursday, we invite the petitioners and the president of the Registered Umbrella Neighborhood Organization, which in this case was Ruth Hayes of the NORA Northside Community Council. The, our council rules say that we are to invite to that conference no more than, or actually, it's limited to no more than two persons for each side. So our practice has been, as I said, to invite the petitioners and the Umbrella Neighborhood Organization, and then they figure out who they're going to bring to, to the conference. One of the purposes of the conference is to try to work out a settlement. But the, but although the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association, let me back up. At the time of the call down, which was March 12th, I believe Counselor Fanning mentioned this, there was a lot of confusion and debate about what exactly the, the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association was. At that point, it was not a registered neighborhood organization, and who exactly was authorized to speak for it. And although the, although the invitation went out only to, only to Ruth Hayes, I don't think it's fair to say that the neighborhood association was somehow, you know, muzzled or, or excluded from the process. What they were excluded from, to be sure, is that they did not get to veto a potential settlement that would be, that might be reached by the petitioners and, and the other neighborhood organizations, the three that Counselor Fanning mentioned. This, for one thing, this is a legislative process, and the opponents obviously were not excluded from communicating their position directly or indirectly to counselors, as I understand they have done. In addition, I'm aware of at least one meeting between the attorney for some of the, some of the opponents and the attorney for the petitioners in an effort to see if they could reach agreement, but there was no resolution. So the reason the council rules limit the number of participants in the staff conferences precisely because you can't do this if every dissenting group or faction or individual resident or outside interest group gets veto power over a potential settlement. And that's also why the rule has a provision that if there is a settlement and there are people who object to the settlement, this is the forum and the time at which they are given an opportunity to do that. But certainly, as Counselor Fanning said, the, at the conference, as I understand it anyway, some, at least some, or maybe all of the, of the concerns that had been raised by, by the neighbor, by the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association folks, I mean, there had been considerable discussion among the neighborhood groups, and that they had, and that the three, the three folks who did attend the conference and did ultimately agree to the settlement and the new commitments that were filed as a result of the settlement. But again, the point is that our process is set up to, number one, encourage settlement, but number two, it would be completely untenable to, and against the council rule, which says two people per side, to give every conceivable dissenter a veto power over the, over the settlement. Thank you.
Counselor Gray.
Mr. B. Sickle, at the meeting that you attended, that you, the meeting that you was attended, was the Driftwood people represented at that meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, again, I'm not sure who exactly, exactly Driftwood is. The Counselor Fanning mentioned the folks who were at the meeting. That was Ruth Hayes from NORA Northside Community Council, which is the umbrella organization, and that, of course, includes, includes the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood. I'm not as familiar with the, with the scope of the other two organizations who did come, but maybe Counselor Fanning or one of them can answer that. But, but, you know, they were not, the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association as such was not invited to that because, again, you can only have two persons per side. And, you know, as I said, our normal practice is that we invite the umbrella organization, and we leave it to the umbrella organization to try to resolve any disputes among the factions and the groups and so forth. And that's the way it's supposed to work. Obviously, it didn't in this case in the sense that, that there, there are some folks who want to have a public hearing anyway, but that's, that's, the rule is set up to, you know, the rule anticipates that, and that's why it says that, that when the settlement is presented for approval, that the folks who may dissent from the settlement have an opportunity to explain why they think there should still be a full public hearing.
Very good. Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would like to address Counselor Gray's question, which is a great question. I wish it had a simpler answer, but at the time of the call down, at the time the negotiation process officially started, the president was at that time Karen Hamilton. There was a leadership change, and in spite of, you know, the leadership change didn't matter to us. What matters to us, what mattered to us was representing the negotiation points set forth by Driftwood Hills, who had informed us at that time of the leadership change that it was Ms. Mattel and Ms. Clark. And their negotiation points were absolutely thoroughly represented during that pre-settlement negotiation where Counselor B. Sicker presided. I know that's a complicated answer, but that's, you know, they were registered as a neighborhood association 10 days in. At the time, the Registered Neighborhood Association of Land Use Record was NORA Council. So that's who made that decision, and that's why.
Thank you very much. Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Fanning, I'd like to ask a quick question. On, when you say leadership change, what is the process for that? Was there, I'm trying to understand more of how that unfolded and what that looked like.
Thank you, Counselor, for your question. I, it appeared, so I emailed the full council all of the information I have on this topic earlier today, but we were unable to obtain any articles of incorporation or bylaws or governance documents from Mr. Sykes, who is an attorney who is said to be representing the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association. I would be a lot more comfortable if the people involved, if the neighborhood association spoke to that. I was not a party to any of those processes, but I've, it was, you know, I have a timeline for you, but I don't, I don't think it really serves us to get into all the details. I think the most important thing is that we focus on what the settlement gives the neighborhood. And I, there are people in the audience that can speak in detail to that, but I'm probably not the correct person.
Counsel Evans, does that answer somewhat your question?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, when you have a neighborhood that large, did 10 people show up and vote out this leadership, or did 30 or 40? You know, I don't know what leadership change means. I could have showed up with five people and kicked out our president.
Okay. I'm a little concerned that we may be going off point here to the, to the proposal. Were you going to request someone from DMD?
Yes. I, I wanted to, so there has been a lot of, there have been a lot of residents emailing me saying that they want to have only residential development on this entire parcel, or doubting the validity or reality of the potential for the kite development to be built by Keystone Construction. So, you know, I have tried to explain this to as many people as possible, that, you know, there is a tree mitigation plan that is involved in, that would have to be accepted by the Department of Metropolitan Development in order for the kite project to be built, but that is a doable thing. So I would like to invite Director Emily Mack of Department of Metropolitan Development up to just confirm that neutrally, so that no one has to take my word for that.
Is Director Mack in the audience?
She is.
Director Mack.
President Osley, and members of the council, good evening. My name is Emily Mack, and I'm the director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. To answer Counselor Fanning's question, so there was a rezoning petition and a subsequent development that was approved in 2005. That development could still be built if a tree mitigation and a tree preservation plan was approved. The process to do that is to submit that plan to the Division of Current Planning and DMD, and the administrator of current planning would review that, and if the requirements are met, then the administrator could approve that plan. So that's the technical process to approve a tree mitigation and preservation plan. Does that help clarify, Counselor Fanning?
It does. I also want, I would, I would also like to clarify what, what options the neighborhood would have at that point if a tree mitigation plan is actually approved by the Department of Metropolitan Development. What options would be left to the neighborhood in order to try to stop that development?
It is, it is not a, a public hearing process. That is just an administrative process that is conducted in the office and approved by the administrator.
So just to echo what you're saying, if a tree mitigation plan were accepted by the Department of Metropolitan Development, there would be nothing standing in the way of the kite project being built by Keystone Construction or anyone else who would acquire that property because the zoning would remain with that property, correct?
That is correct, Counselor Fanning, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. My last point before we open it up to public comment is, this is, you know, again, a rare process. It's not something we see at the council. I haven't seen this in my two and a half years yet. But this is the way for the Registered Neighborhood Association to have a last chance voice in trying to create an outcome that is the most beneficial outcome possible to their neighborhood. I think it's important that we respect that. The negotiation team in this case had over 65 years of land use experience between the three people there. They know what they were doing. They were very thorough and very considerate, first of the needs of the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood, second of the, of the concerns of NORA. That was never far from the discussion, and it was prioritized, as I listed in the highlights of the settlement. So voting against this settlement tonight would actually be voting to not allow registered neighborhood associations with history of land use to impact the, the land use decisions that happen in their neighborhood. So I ask for your support in that. I ask my fellow counselors for your support in that. And at this time, I will bring forth the motion and say, Mr. President, I am pleased to report that a compromise has been reached on proposal number 101, 2018, rezoning petition, petition number 2016-zone-020, and that the petitioner has filed modified commitments with the MDC and the clerk of the council. Therefore, I move for a vote on proposal 101, 2018, subject to the modified commitments without a full public hearing, and that proposal, number 101, 2018, as modified, be adopted.
All right. This motion has been properly made and seconded to vote on the rezoning proposal, subject to the modified commitments without a full public hearing. At this time, anyone still desiring to be heard shall have two minutes each to explain why the council shall hold a full public hearing. I will ask for anyone in the audience who wants to come forward to please keep your comments, technical in nature, and please focus on why you believe that the settlement is not, settlement agreement is not acceptable. If at all possible, if you've heard someone make the same comment before, I would ask, for the sake of everyone in the, in the room, to try not to repeat what, what has already been stated. So anyone interested in coming forward, please, we'll start the clock for two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa DeGraff. I live on Driftwood Drive, which is one street over from the proposed development. My late husband, Todd, was the attorney for the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association in 2005. We sort of won the, lost, lost the battle, but won the fight in, in that development, in that development was going to go forward, and then the economy tanked, and it didn't happen, although they got the approval to do the development that we were opposed to. I am a member of the NORA Community Council, though I'm not on the board, and I am very strongly supportive of the work that Karen Hamilton and Ruth Hayes did on behalf of our neighborhood. This development is going to happen. The developer owns the property, he has property rights, and as much as I would like to see all those trees there and not have another building in the build, in the neighborhood bringing more traffic in, that's not realistic, unless somebody has a couple-million-dollar pot of money laying around that they can, you know, use to acquire the property. This is property that this developer owns and has an absolute right to develop, and I think that we have the best deal that we can possibly get for this property, and I encourage the council to support Counselor Fanning's motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is Russ Sykes. I represent the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association. Who you see standing here. I have represented that organization since before the call down. The dates that were recited just have no validity based on the organization I represent. Its officers are here. They've corresponded with this council about their, their objection to this plan. When this plan was called down by this council, Driftwood Hills was one of the two organizations listed from the community, NORA Community Council and Driftwood Hills, were the two community organizations listed. They were told after the call down that because they didn't support the call down, and they didn't support the development plan, they could not participate by the president of the NORA Community Council, and they were replaced by the NORA Alliance. And in the new plan, the NORA Alliance and the NORA Community Council are now the two organizations who are represented and who are listed as organizations that have input into what happens at this site. The Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association was intentionally cut out of the process because they would not agree to support the process because they would not agree to support the call down. The representation that's been stated didn't exist. The people who were cited as having given input in this process will disagree, and they're here to speak and say that that's not true. This process is flawed. We've spoken to the council in writing about how there were issues regarding the call down in the first place, whether or not a typographical error was a sufficient basis. We now have a new plan with an entirely new building approved that was never the subject of a public hearing, that was never the subject of a petition before the commission. The size of the building went from 58,000 square feet to a five-story building that can equal 140,000 square feet. That's never been heard by anyone until this plan was delivered. It was never delivered to Driftwood Hills. I had to get it from the commission at 4:30 Friday, because we never got a copy. We believe the proposal should be defeated because the people in this community should have a voice, and that voice was taken away. We also believe development should and will happen on that site, but that it must be development that happens with the input of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Adamson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a point of clarification, if, if we could. It's my understanding that this line of public input should be centered around whether or not we should have a public hearing or not. And so, I just wanted to make sure that all the, the public, members of the public understand that.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, please proceed.
Okay. My name is Stacy Clark, and I am the land use representative for the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association. I have been representing my neighborhood since January of 2017 against the Alexander Proposal. I've organized several neighborhood meetings, one with Keystone Realty to hear our numerous concerns. I've represented Driftwood Hills at Nora Community Council meetings, and I was also remonstrator at the MDC hearing on behalf of Driftwood Hills. It stands to reason I would have been an excellent candidate to enter into negotiations due to my history with the project, yet that was not the case. And that's because Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association was told they could not participate because they would not agree with the developer in the call down vote. Had we been allowed to participate, as we should have been, any agreement on a proposal would have been different than that which is in front of you. We were previously dismayed at having 60,000 square feet of commercial space in our residential neighborhood. Now that space has increased to a potential of 140,000 square feet, with no new traffic study to address the impact on the already gridlocked and accident-prone intersection at 86 and Haverstick. We were outraged by the lack of protection for the wooded nature of our community, and this settlement loosens that protection even further. We have been threatened that if we don't go along with the call down and settlement, the property will be illegally clear-cut. We were even told that the planning staff would be removed from the project and replaced to pave the way for a plan approval. We do not expect our elected officials to condone how the neighbors most impacted were excluded from the process. We do not expect our elected representatives to condone the kind of threats and maneuvers that led to this proposal, which you have in front of you now. We do expect our elected officials to protect our opportunity to participate and be heard. We expect our elected representatives to act in everyone's interest, not just a few who were selected specifically to shut us out. So we thank you in advance for voting no on this proposal.
I'm Ruth Hayes, notorious president of the Nora Northside Community Council. I, I have a hearing problem, so I didn't hear everything that was said, but the gist was that we cut people out of participation. I think anyone who knows my history as president of the Nora Community Council knows that we try to hear people, even when we're tired, as you are tonight. I know you're weary with this, and so I'm not going to get into details. But on March the 4th, well, first of all, let's just say this, I am very saddened, very saddened, that our counselor, your colleague, has been attacked in the most vile and vicious way, when she was representing what we asked her to do. She came to us and said, "This is an opportunity, but I will not do it, I will not do the call down unless you ask for it." And at that meeting on July, on January the 20th, all four, all four groups agreed, two of them very reluctantly. Shortly thereafter, two of the groups withdrew their support for the call down. On March the 4th, we met with these folks, and the, the goal was, we were very clear, our goal was, we were going to try to get a settlement to make this a better proposal, a project. And we met on March the 4th to talk about, what do you want us to work on? So that later on, it was prepared in a long sheet of things we were going to ask for from the, the developer. At that meeting, Mrs. Clark said, "We do not, we still do not support the call down. We do not want negotiations, and we do not want the project."
Okay.
If you've ever gone to the State Fair and watched the 12 horse hitches, what would happen if they took half of those horses and put them at the back of the wagon?
Ms. Hayes.
And the others were in the front?
Ms. Hayes.
There could be no success.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Counselor Adamson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, with, with all due respect to our speakers, the, the point of this public testimony, right now, is to debate whether or not to have a public hearing. Not whether or not you support the call down, not whether or not you support the project, just whether or not you support having a public hearing.
I'd like to speak to that. I'm Morton Marcus. I do not live in the Driftwood area, but I consider every wooded area within our city to be a concern of mine, and a concern of every citizen in the city of Indianapolis. Mrs. Hayes gets a great deal of respect because of her many years of activity. But we have here tonight a failure of democracy, when the attorney for the city, and I believe that's your position, sir, the attorney for the city talks about a nice rigid structure that does not recognize the legitimacy of a neighborhood association that fails to behave in the way that a neighborhood association has been told it must behave. These are, in a certain sense, simple people, not accustomed to dealing with a bureaucracy that is represented by this council, and the bureaucracy that is represented by the entire metropolitan development activity. The Metropolitan Development Commission is the only group that has had a public hearing on this. They came to the conclusion that this project should not be built, and then this council, this council went over the head of their own commission and said, "We're going to go forward with this. We're going to use an end-around mechanism to go forward with this," and that is inappropriate. You have a commission for a purpose. You generally rubber stamp whatever your commission does, but when it came to this particular project, which must have some magical power behind it, you had to say, "No, we don't trust our own commission." I think that democracy is what you're having to deal with tonight, whether or not we have a public hearing, so that the people of Driftwood Hills can be heard. That's the issue, as this gentleman has said.
Thank you very much for your comments. My name is John Watson. I'm the current president of the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association. First, I want to expect, express my deep gratitude and respect for all of those who have participated in the processes that have led us here tonight. It is, participation in our government is essential, and I respect their efforts. I speak to encourage you to go forth with the hearing. We have several issues that are unsettled. As a group, we are not satisfied with the current settlement. It is, at best, a minor improvement over what was before. We see a great threat to our neighborhood through the domino effect of allowing this particular kind of development on that property. We fear that there will be a domino effect across 86, 86th Street Moving West. We're also concerned, I am personally being a plant biologist, with the old growth trees, and there's scant information about how they will be preserved. Not a single one of those trees should be cut to make way for a new building, in my opinion. So there are other issues as well, but they can only be hashed out if we have a public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Wagnon, and I am the past board president of the Nora Alliance. I live in the Sherwood Forest neighborhood in Nora. With the call down, when the call down was proposed, representatives of our board met with Counselor Fanning, Driftwood Hills, and the Nora Northside Council, and while the Nora Alliance did not ask for the call down, we supported it as an opportunity for a better outcome. On March 4th, without knowing if the call down would happen, our representatives and those of the NCC and Driftwood Hills met and agreed on a common set of objectives for the negotiation, should it happen. And it was our position at that time that Driftwood Hills and the Nora Community Council should be the primary organizations at the table with the developer, as two were allowed per the process. But then, we understand that Driftwood Hills withdrew itself from the negotiations, and the Nora Alliance stepped up to advance their agreed-upon goals. These are recorded in the minutes of our board meeting, that we were to be a supportive role behind Driftwood and NCC, and we only stepped up when they said they did not want to negotiate, and I understand they wanted to negotiate separately and independently with the developer.
Mr. President, point of order. Again, this is about whether or not to have the public hearing, not to rehash the, the details of the, the negotiation.
So, Mr. Speaker, if you don't mind, in the time that you have left, can you focus on whether or not we should have this, this hearing?
Yes.
And the whys. And unfortunately, we have 20 seconds.
Okay, good. We took those goals, and we negotiated in earnest for those. We worked very hard, long. I think we were successful in winning many improvements, and therefore, I think that the Driftwood communities' goals were, were adequately represented in the negotiation, and we encourage you to support the proposal.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Miller?
Yeah, point of order myself, I guess. I, I guess I disagree that this point of whether or not Driftwood was or was not part of the table might be the number one reason I'm trying to decide if we should have a public hearing. I'm, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing Driftwood saying they were excluded. I just heard somebody else testify that they excluded themselves. So I would love to hear testimony around that, because obviously if they were excluded, there's a concern. If they withdrew, that was their choice, and I think we all need to know that fact as clearly as possible. It may be impossible to get to the bottom of it, though, because I think I'm hearing two different viewpoints, but I think that's a key point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I, can I address that real quickly? I feel like Counselor Skels had-
Just a moment, please.
Okay.
Counselor Simpson?
I think we're here, Mr. B. Secre, Counsel B. Secre has stated why we're here. I'm sitting here, trying to figure out where we are with this, and it's getting more and more confusing. We're either here to do what we were told to do by council rules. I think it's very clear whether or not Driftwood was there at the meeting or not is not what we are here to debate, or to say what's wrong with it, not to say that, but I think we need to stay on the point of order, so that every time someone get up here, they get off the point. I would like to get to where we need to get to tonight.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor Simpson. Ma'am, if, if, if you don't mind, if you, if you can address the whys, and I know you've, you've already spoken, so it might be, if you wouldn't mind, it might be better if we heard from the other individual, because it, we might go off of point, and we need to stay focused on the task that, that, that we're here to perform.
Okay, okay.
But thank you. Yeah. And so if we can keep that focused on whether or not we should have a hearing or not, the reasons why, that would be very, very helpful.
Hello. I'm Jeff Stan. I'm the executive director of the Indiana Forest Alliance, and we also testified at the MDC hearing last fall against the proposal, and applauded that decision by the MDC. I, I want to explain why you should have the hearing, and you shouldn't vacate that. You were told on March 12th that the primary reason that we-
Counselor Simpson?
I thought we, we were here not to talk about the hearing. I mean-
No, no, I mean, no, no, it's more about, I think he's going to explain why we should have or not have, you know, a hearing.
Okay.
Not to give us a history, which is what I think we may have been hearing a lot of, and that's not why we're here. We are here to find out. Good debate and good reason why we should either have the hearing or not.
Okay. You've, you've been told that, that you needed to approve this proposed agreement to keep the developer from clear-cutting Haverstick Woods, that that's what they were going to do if they just proceeded with the kite development. But the fact is, is there was never a final development plan approved for the kite development, and for that plan to be approved, it has to pass the requirement in the zoning that was approved that requires, that was designed to try to maintain tree cover on the site in the forested character of the area amidst a retail residential development, and so they passed it with a tree preservation requirement that they have to replace any tree they take that's over 10 inches on the site with a planting onsite or in the immediate vicinity. And that's crucial. And, and so what, what's happened is you've been told that, that the, the developer could proceed under kite development to clear-cut the site when he does not have that legal right, because the kite zoning took that away with that tree plant. The, the zoning in place says, well, I've already explained, it has to be in the immediate area. The, the proposed agreement reached between the fans of this development and the developer allows the developer to avoid meeting this requirement, as long as he plants replacement trees anywhere in the Nora Community Council territories. That's almost 6,000 acres.
Mr. Stan?
That could be five miles from the site. That essentially negates the effect of the tree preservation plan that is in place.
Mr. Stan, thank you.
I'm on my last point?
No, no, unfortunately.
Okay.
If we can have another, thank you, though. Sir.
Very briefly, thank you, a very general comment. This council just celebrated with King Park earlier this evening, the idea of inclusive, inclusivity, to be an inclusive city. If we want to be an inclusive city, we need to have a public hearing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Neil Sinclair, and I'm not a member of the Nora Community Council or the Driftwood Hills Association. My family, however, will be the most affected of anyone in the neighborhood by this development, as we own the property directly north of this development. I was scared to death that the kite development would occur. If it did, there would be all sorts of parking and traffic, the trees would be cut down. This new proposal, in my eyes, is a much better deal for our family. They're leaving trees that were previously going to be a retention pond. There's a much smaller environmental footprint. This has been going on for years. I think it's time to get the project started. My mother's 91 years old, and lives in the same house that I was raised in. There's homeless people that are camping out in those woods now. I, I don't like to see that. I want to s-
Sir, in the interest, in, in interest of, of just being consistent-
Okay, again, I, I think enough debate has, has occurred. I'd like to see the project go forward without having a hearing.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just from my understanding regarding having a public hearing this evening, am I right to think that a public hearing tonight would not get our neighbors exactly what they're requesting? Is, is that right? Maybe Mr. B. Secre can speak to it, because I, I mean, I'm, I'm all for folks having the opportunity to come and speak and share their thoughts and concerns about their neighborhoods. However, I'm feeling like a public hearing tonight will not get them exactly what they're speaking to. speaking to.
Counsel Biesecker, could you address Counselor Lewis's question, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we heard from Director Mack of DMD a little while ago. I don't know whether she's still here, but what, I believe what she indicated was that the, that if the MDC's denial of the current-
Can you talk a little, please?
Yeah, sorry. If the, if the MDC's, yes, MDC's denial is upheld after a public hearing or even without a public hearing, that does not mean that the project somehow, somehow, or the parcels somehow go back to virgin status. What it means is that the zoning that was approved in 2005, the development could go forward if, and this is the if that she mentioned, if there is a, if there's a tree mitigation program submitted and approved by DMD. But otherwise, where we would be left is that if the MDC's denial of this petition is upheld, what's left is the zoning, rezoning that was approved in 2005.
Does that help, Counsel Lewis?
Yes, and so, without that plan, it doesn't get them the outcome that they're wishing for this evening.
Okay, very good. Just a second. Counsel Gray.
Did I also hear Director say that at this point, we cannot have another public hearing? Is that what I'm hearing, Fred?
I tell you what, you mean that on the tree mitigation? Is that what you're asking about?
No, to re, to have another public, not pass this tonight and have instead moved to have another public hearing. Is that, is that within the scope of the council?
I'll say, I, okay, I think I got the question. There are, well, there are two options, which we'll get to soon, but one is to, the next vote you have will be a vote on whether to have a public hearing tonight or not have a public hearing tonight and go straight to voting to approve or not the settlement. And beyond that, I think the only, the only public process at that point after that, if the MDC's denial is upheld, would be the, would be the tree mitigation issue that Director Mack spoke about earlier.
Okay, very good. Counsel Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarification as to where I'm at, the instructions that were given to us, I think it was last month, when it was called down, instructions were given by this body to the parties to go and do something, negotiate something. I just want to know if the process was followed, that when it was called down, they were given instruction on what to do. And I guess that whatever they did, the proposal was presented to us this evening that the settlement had been achieved. My question to anyone, including Mr. Biesecker, would the process follow?
Counsel Biesecker.
I'm sorry, you, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, yeah, let me, let me back up a little bit. The-
I'm sorry, I can't, Mr.-
I'm sorry, yeah, the way, the way the process is set out in statute is that, once the MDC decides a rezoning petition, whether it's a denial or an approval, then that MDC action goes before this body, goes before the council. If the council does not vote to set it for a public hearing, then the MDC's decision stands. In this case, there was a motion and a vote by the council to schedule it for a public hearing. And that's, now, that's part one of the process. Now, part two is where our rule, the council rule kicks in about having essentially a settlement conference. And as I mentioned earlier, our practice, at least since I've been here and I think for many years before that, has been that rather than the council, rather than me, trying to figure out who should get invited and who shouldn't, we invite the petitioners and we invite the umbrella neighborhood organization representative, which in this case was Ruth Hayes from Nora Northside, and we let them figure out who should be there and who should represent whom and who's going to make arguments on behalf of whomever. That's what we did here. So, the answer to your question is, yes, we followed the process. We're following the process now, because a settlement was reached and commitments were filed with the MDC. And the rule provides, as you heard earlier, that if someone objects to the settlement, this is their opportunity to explain why there should be a full public hearing and then a vote, as opposed to a vote on the settlement without a public hearing. So, yes, we have followed the process.
Mr. President.
Counsel Oliver, yes.
If, if my question was answered, would the process follow?
Yes.
Yes, and he said-
To get us to this point?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to the question, was the process followed? I believe the attorney for the neighborhood Driftwood Hills brought up several times in some emails, email correspondence to us counselors, that going back to, on the process, where the MDC rules of procedure could be appealed by council or certified by council, and they were, they were certified by council originally. He mentioned some case law that tells us that, you know, the clerk's error, or some, that the clerk's error could not be taken into consideration in doing away with what the MDC had decided. There were some other case laws that he cited in terms of technical mistakes and whether petitions should stand after they've been certified by council. So, I'm wondering if Mr. Biesecker has any counter-case law that he could cite that might deviate from what the Driftwood Hills attorney cited.
Counsel Biesecker, did you, did you follow Counselor Scales's question?
I believe so. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Well, what Counselor Scales is bringing up is the, is the legal issue that we discussed at some length at the last council meeting, which is whether, whether the fact that the, the MDC erroneously certified to the council in October or November that what the MDC had ruled on was a 13-acre project as opposed to a more or less six-acre project. And the issue there, I think, and I think I explained this at the last council meeting, the issue comes down to whether that was, you know, a meaningless clerical error or whether it was something more substantive. And, and the cases that I believe Mr. Sykes and Mr. Silver cited essentially assume that the error was merely clerical and not at all substantive, and it was the judgment of the MDC administrator that it was more than just a clerical error, because it improperly described the project. It was 13 acres instead of six. So, it was MDC that made the decision, or MDC staff that made the decision to recertify it with the correct description. So, I believe, as I said, I believe we covered that last time, and the, and the council decided to go, to go forward and, and have the opportunity for the proposal to be called down, even though the proposal had been certified in October with the erroneous description.
Counsel Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. What this really comes down to me about whether or not to have a public hearing or not, is the understanding, was that neighborhood left out of the discussions, or did they voluntarily walk out? Is there anyone, the attorney for them, anyone who can speak to that and pinpoint that for me?
Thank you. And then Counsel Masary, just one moment. Is Mr., Mr. Sykes still in the room?
Yes.
Could you come forward and, and answer and address Counsel Evans's question?
Thank you, Mr. President. In response to your question, Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association has always asked, almost begged everyone involved in this process, simply to be a part of the process. I've made that request directly to Mr. Ozemir. I've made it directly, several times, to his attorney. The members of the organization have made it directly to the Nora Community Council and to the Nora Alliance. We have made it directly to the members of this body. We have asked that they simply have a voice. And in response to Counselor Lewis's question, we have asked for a public hearing to have an opportunity to have that voice. We haven't asked to not develop the project. We haven't asked to leave the forest intact. We've simply asked for an opportunity to have a voice. That has been excluded by the participants so far, and the only way to rectify that is either have a public hearing or pass the proposal as it stands and ask the courts to reverse it all, so that they finally do get a chance to have that voice. That's our request.
Counsel Evans had a, you had a follow-up question, is that correct?
Yeah, I want clarification. Were, you were never asked to be part of this discussion, you were never a part of it, or did you walk out?
Never walked out. Asked always to be part of it. Were called, I was called Friday, a week ago Friday, by the attorney for the developer. We had a meeting at 3:00 in the afternoon on Good Friday. He asked to hear what we had to say. There was no way for us to negotiate, not, we weren't asked to participate, he merely asked to hear what we had to say. And I told him there was no way for us to meaningfully try to reach an agreement between Friday and today, in five business days, to somehow cover the ground that has taken now 17 years, whatever the number is, 12 years that this process has been going on, but that all we wanted was the opportunity. There was never a walk away. There was simply a statement by the organization and its officers that they did not support the call down, and because of that, they were told in writing, which has been circulated to this council, that they could not participate in a negotiation with the developer on the call down. Thank you.
If you hold that thought, I must get to Counsel Masary. He's been very patient. Counsel Masary? Is this in addition to the question as a piggyback or in a different, or a different question entirely?
Pardon me? My question is one thing. Driftwood, how close are you to this project? Is it, somebody said it's almost in your backyard, is that correct?
It's right-
Okay, Nora, Nora is how far away?
Nora encompasses a much larger area, roughly from Meridian to, I think-
No, you are not correct.
All right, all right, all right, all right, enough. Okay, I tell you what, everyone, everyone-
And that's not the only, that's not the only-
We are going back to, we're going back to the origin of why we're here.
Okay.
And I do feel like we have strayed, unfortunately.
Right.
And I want to respect my fellow counselors, but we have to stay on task.
Right.
So, Counsel Fanning, did you have a response to that, to that last, to that last comment?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. And I believe actually Ms. Hayes was going to respond to that question as well, but-
I'd like for you, just, please.
Great, perfect. Okay. So, January 20th, we had a meeting. We called it the summit meeting. Four organizations got to send two representatives apiece. Ms. Clark and Ms. Mattel were there representing Driftwood Hills, in addition to Karen Hamilton, two people from the Nora Alliance. Mr. Collo was there, I'm not sure who he was representing, but, let's see, also Elizabeth Mahoney, the Board President of the Forest Alliance. Every single person at that meeting said, "Call the proposal down." I have lots of witnesses, that happened. Two of those organizations, within 48 hours, reversed their decision. We discussed that with them at the time, that the call-down process was the only legal process that would allow the neighborhoods to negotiate a settlement. Any negotiation that happened outside of the call-down process would not be certified by DMD. It wasn't part of this, the call-down settlement process. So, when you opposed, and it was stated, when they decided to no longer support the call-down, that they were no longer interested in that settlement process, and they understood that doing, in doing that, they would not be able to sit at a negotiation table for which they did not believe in settling. Now, that being said, the conversation and the communication was always continued with them. Again, March 4th meeting, all of these negotiation points, many who came from, who came directly from Ms. Mattel and Ms. Clark, that I stated at length, were used at the point of the process. And there are numerous emails, which I've emailed this body, between the Nora Alliance and Ms. Mattel and Ms. Clark, and even the new president, Mr. Watson, about what the priorities are, what, that they are arguing for these negotiation points. They were included at every turn, but you can't have someone at a negotiation table as part of a team, and again, I didn't pick the team, Nora Council at the time was the registered neighborhood agency in charge of land use. That was their responsibility. But you cannot have someone at a negotiation team that has stated repeatedly that they don't believe in that settlement process, and they don't believe in a settlement for this property. So, that's why we're here, but they, despite the fact that they opposed the call-down and opposed the settlement process that had to exist in this chamber by our ordinance, by our laws, they were always included. Their needs, their concerns, and their issues were always included. It was at the front of everyone's mind, and I, I would like to address some of the other issues, but I, I really want to be respectful of everyone's time, but-
All right. I, I, thank you very much, Counsel Fanning. Counsel Holliday, did you have a question?
I did, Mr. President, but I think Counsel Fanning addressed it. If it comes back up again, I'll ask.
Just to be clear, if we, you know, anyone speaking, please be speaking either in support of or against the public hearing. And if yes, please tell us why or why not. Ma'am, please come forward.
Oh. Mr. President, I would just like to ask a question of Counselor Fanning as a follow-up, just to get some clarification. Pardon?
Yeah, you ask me, please.
Oh, I'm, okay. So, from my understanding is, a lot of communication took place before the March 12th vote on the call-down. And at that point, from what I'm understanding is, that many residents of Driftwood Hills opposed the call-down, I believe, and I would like to get their confirmation of this, I believe it's because they wanted the Metropolitan Development Commission's decision to stand. That's why they were opposed to it. So, they were hoping the vote would go their way, but when it did not, and they saw then that settlement agreements, negotiations had to be entered into, at that point, they were very interested in becoming part of the process, because their other option had been closed off to them. Is that correct, or am I off?
Thank you.
I'm happy to respond to that. Thank you, Counsel, for your question. The, yes, I mean, you're accurate in that there was, there were certainly several, many people in Driftwood Hills that opposed the call-down. The reason that I was always communicated with for them opposing that call-down was the belief that the kite project would be unable to be built. And you heard from Director Mack that it is feasible, it is possible, it can happen, and there's no public process left by which to stop that. This is not an idle threat. It's the zoning that will stick with the property, no matter who owns it. It's the zoning that will stick with the property no matter who owns it. The Kite development is feasible. The treatment, and to Mr. Stantz's point, the Kite plan, for those of you who don't remember or aren't familiar, is a clear cutting of the trees. I believe the number of trees saved is up to twenty-five, maybe, out of thirty-four-hundred caliper inches of trees. And yes, those trees would need to get mitigated, but that's cutting it first, and it's a sixty-thousand square foot big box store with lots and lots of surface, of hard surface, so no trees, no drainage. The mitigation program, you know, it's very detailed, it's very stringent, but you heard from Director Mack this evening that it can happen. It is feasible. And most developers I know are pretty motivated to get a return on their investment. So if, it's my neighborhood, I don't want to take that chance. So the people who opposed the call-down were expressing to me that they were doing that thinking they could, incorrectly thinking that they could prevent the Kite project from being built, and that's simply not true.
All right, very good, thank you very much. Ma'am, thank you.
Mr. President and the city council members, I apologize. It's getting late, I know you're tired. But I am a Driftwood Hills resident. I live in Driftwood Hills. That property is five hundred yards from my home. I was never given any notice of any hearings of any kind. I'm not saying, I don't know how many people of the NORAH Alliance actually live in Driftwood Hills, but I'm here with my neighbors. And we appreciate that property. And we're not saying, "Don't build anything." We're saying, "Give us a chance to work with you." Because that is going to affect everyone in this neighborhood. It's going to affect our property values, it's going to affect the traffic in the neighborhood, which is already horrific. And just let us be a part of the conversation for once. Give me the opportunity to speak and my neighbors to speak. Because that's all we're asking for. We're not saying, "Don't build." We're saying, you know, "Let us negotiate with you on what you build." That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerome Delbridge, I'm a certified arborist here in Indianapolis. I wanted to make a point. The zoning protection for the trees that were in place in 2005 until now would protect all trees that are not invasive ten inches in diameter and larger. And any of those trees that are cut down would have to be planted on the property or in the immediate vicinity of the property. That's important to the Driftwood Hills neighbors, that those trees are mitigated within the neighborhood, not within the entire NORAH area, which is miles wide. The neighborhood wants to see those trees preserved, wants this council to respect Department of Metropolitan Development and their, their protection of those trees in order to keep the fabric of this neighborhood intact. It is true that if a developer were to bring forward a plan in compliance with Department of Metropolitan Development...
Sir, tell us why or why not we should have the hearing?
We should have a hearing in order to protect DMD's wishes. It was the, it was the intent of the neighborhood to not call down and not replace the DMD and the commission's request and their decision. Now they've been, because they disagreed with that decision, now they were put in a spot where the neighborhood can no longer advocate and no longer have a place at the table. We deserve a place at the table. This neighborhood deserves a place at the table for many reasons, and tree preservation, keeping that, the fabric with the development that will happen, but keeping the intent that's been around for more than a decade on this property, this is why the community deserves a hearing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Karen Hamilton. I reside at 2924 Sinclair Wood Drive, directly across the street from ninety-one-year-old Mrs. Beverly Sinclair. And I'm going to keep it short and to protocol and say, I think we should support Counsel Fanning's motion to not have a public hearing and hopefully vote this settlement in. It is a good settlement, it is good for the neighbors, it was worked on hard. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just want to say that you, you don't have the option of just voting on this motion or...
Mr. President, point of order.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, I do apologize, yeah.
You can continue this until a month and give people a chance to have the hearing. You don't have to have any more of the hearing. There is no hearing going on now. People are just speaking. Give them a chance to have that hearing.
Point of order.
Sir, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stantz. Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel members, Joseph Calder, an attorney, representing the developer on this. I only want to address Counsel Evans' question regarding the status of Driftwood Hills and the relationship to the, whether we're going to have a hearing or not, if that's possible.
I really would like to keep it to the question at hand.
The question...
Right.
The question of whether to have a hearing or not is, I participated in the negotiation per the council ordinances regarding settlement. We negotiated face-to-face on numerous negotiations. The reason Mr. Sykes feels cut out, as I asked him directly, "Who do you represent?" I was concerned that he didn't know who he represented. I could find no governing documents for this association, and I knew that there were people that live in that neighborhood that were not being represented by him or the views of others that he represents. And that's always the conundrum you have with an unorganized association like that. I invited him to my office, he brought one comment to the table, which, by the way, was being addressed in the settlement agreement. Nothing else was brought to the table. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Charles Bookwalter, and first of all, I'd like to point out that I don't see anybody arguing for this development from the association. Second of all, I'm, was responsible for creating the gallon usage that was instrumental, I think, in turning over the, the, yeah, the commission, the committee. There's, a four-inch rainfall on the amount of parking lot produces four-hundred-and-forty-some-thousand gallons. That's twenty huge oil, you know, fuel tanks in, that are outside of gas stations. And, but most importantly, I'd just like to point out that, you know, you're approving a plan that has not had a public hearing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Haney. I'm a resident of the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood. And the board voted down this whole thing in October of last year. And the development now has set, set up for negotiation. The negotiation failed. There's been very little change from the original project to now. There's a little bit of traffic mitigation and maybe a sidewalk. There's no give and take between this. We were in favor of the call-down when it was possible to get some set aside for parkland, some other concessions that were possible. It never happened. That's my position.
Hi, my name's Elise Clark, and I live in the neighborhood. We are, I'm in favor of needing a public hearing. We're in the neighborhood immediately adjacent to Haverstik and Ninety-First and Eighty-Sixth Street where this would be coming through, and none of us have, were involved in this. NORAH is further to the west, so they, they're not, you know, as immediately vested as we are and immediately affected. The cars are going to be coming through this neighborhood, it's just a residential, small two-lane road, cul-de-sacs, you know, we need to be involved and have a public hearing. Thank you.
Could you repeat the actual question for me?
Yes. We want you to speak in support or against a public hearing. If yes, please tell us why or why not.
I'm actually against the public hearing. I was part of the negotiating team. And we did work very hard to represent the concerns of the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood. So I believe that the process was followed, and that is how we arrived at the settlement. Therefore, there should not be enough public hearing. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Eubank. I'm the vice president of the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Association, and I live on North Tacoma. I believe we really should have a public hearing. I think we've said it several times, we can supply electronic communication, that when we opposed the call-down, we were excluded. And if you look at the changes that they made, we've cited a few here. They've increased the size of the building from sixty thousand square feet potentially to a hundred-and-forty thousand square feet, without any of the due process around that, around traffic and other mitigating factors. I think going forward without having a public hearing would be a travesty. Thank you.
My name's Lawrence Smiley. I live on East Ninety-First Street, Driftwood Hills. I've been a resident there for forty-one years. And I sort of feel like when my mom said, "I told you so," is why this is happening. No explanation. Well, we had a lot of explanation, but it seems like it's gone around and around and around in a circle, and I think we need to have some sort of voice. I'm seventy years old, and I don't like being told, "I told you so."
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. So I'm going to call for a vote on the motion to vote on the rezoning proposal settlement without a full public hearing. Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to relationships that I have on both sides of this issue, as much as it pains me, I will request to abstain from any votes regarding this issue.
Thank you. I, I will say that I will be as well. Green would be to vote on the rezoning proposal settlement without a full public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I just clarify what, can you please clarify for counselors and the audience what red and green?
Yes, I'm about to, but just a moment. I've got a question from Counsel behind you, Counsel Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. After hearing all of that, I wondered, and I'm asking you obviously to talk to her about it, but would Counsel Fanning be willing to give a final statement? We heard a lot of information. I feel like we had a public hearing practically, but I just would like to hear her advice as the district counselor as to what might be done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Fanning, do you have a final statement you'd like to make?
Mr. President, I'll be brief. Just until a few weeks ago, the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood Organization was officially represented by NORAH. They were the city-acknowledged body. They were the ones who led the call-down, that's why they were at the table, that's why they decided. They made every attempt to include the needs of this neighborhood in the negotiation. I can say that with all confidence. Even though the call-down was opposed, all of the negotiation points were still heavily, heavily considered for Driftwood Hills. I believe the process has been fair. I, NORAH has communicated in the way they always communicate throughout this whole process, Driftwood Hills was represented by NORAH. I'm thrilled that Driftwood Hills is going to represent themselves from now on, but the transition that happened in the middle of this process is really what's muddying these waters. It's made it very complex. So I apologize for that confusion and complexity, but rest assured that you, you did get a voice. You, even if you weren't specifically, you did. Yeah, you did. January 20th, March 4th, dozens of emails on my phone. There's lots of communication that happened here. And the negotiation team negotiated in good faith for the good of the local, immediately affected neighborhood of Driftwood Hills and Greater NORAH. I would like to ask, can everyone who actually lives in Driftwood Hills, please stand, that's here? And those who, those who support the call-down or support the settlement, please stand up if you support the settlement and live in NORAH.
In NORAH?
In NORAH. If you support the settlement and live in NORAH versus...
We live where the trees are.
Right, but if you oppose, if you oppose...
All right, guys, 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 please.
If you oppose the settlement and live in Driftwood Hills, I would like to see those. If you live in Driftwood Hills. And keep in mind, I know who that is. I know who, I know where you guys live. If you live in Driftwood Hills and oppose, or for the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Ask the question again, please.
Please stand if you live within the Driftwood Hills Neighborhood and you oppose this settlement.
How about NORAH?
And please stand if you live in NORAH and you support the settlement.
We're Driftwood Hills, can we be in NORAH too?
No, if you support, if you support.
Mr. President.
Sir, this is about supporting the...
Mr. President.
...a larger sample, I'm saying NORAH.
All right, guys, we get a part of order.
We've seen it, that's enough. It's time, it's been thirteen years.
We are done, we are going to vote. So I need the focus of the fellow coun, of my fellow counselors. We will get to the point at hand. I think we've asked a number of questions over the course of this last hour and a half. I think it is time that we accomplish a task that we were set here to do. So, green would be to vote on the rezoning proposal settlement without a full public hearing. Red would be to hold a full public hearing despite the settlement. This motion requires only a simple majority. Is the board ready? Counselors, please vote. All right. This motion carries with a vote of eighteen yays, two nays, and two abstentions. So if this carries, basically, we will proceed now immediately with no debate to a vote on the rezoning proposal settlement, which is basically overturning the MDC's decision, in this case, a denial, and that will take fifteen votes. Green will be a vote to approve the settlement and overturn the MDC's denial. Red will be a vote to sustain the MDC's denial. Either way, there will not be any, any, any public hearing. Are we ready? All right, fellow counselors, please cast your vote. That carries. A vote of eighteen yays, two nays, and two abstentions, abstentions. So in other words, the MDC's decision has been overturned. And we have, as a, as a council, approved the settlement. Yes. Fellow counselors, I would like to take a five-minute recess. We will now proceed to special orders, unfinished business. There is no business under special orders, unfinished business. We will now proceed to special orders, final adoption. The next item on our agenda is proposal number eighty-nine, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number eighty-nine authorizes the Metropolitan Development Commission and the Department of Metropolitan Development to execute debt obligations in amount not to exceed one million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to be loaned to the Adult and Child Residential Properties LLC as a Section 108 loan guarantee applicant for the, for the acquisition of three apartment buildings and related costs to developing... applicant for the acquisition of three apartment buildings and related costs to developing affordable rental housing and permanent housing. Councilor Adamson moves, seconded by Council Westler, to send proposal number 89 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from fellow councilors? Councilor Gray.
Where's the location of these apartments?
Councilor Adamson.
I don't, I can look up the addresses if you know already.
I don't know the exact addresses, but I know that there are several of them. So there was one on the north side. There was one more central, south of Washington Township. One on the west side.
There's not, there's not, there's not a Tech High School on, it's not the...
I don't believe any of them were there.
I think about Tech.
Council Lewis.
Mr. President, I have the addresses. One address is 3472 North Illinois Street. The second one is 1309 North Pennsylvania Street. And the third one is 5822 East Washington Street.
All right, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Council Robinson. No, no questions. All right. Any additional questions? All right, we will proceed to the board for our vote. The proposal carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 94, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 94, 2018, requires the administration and operation of the county jail facilities be non-privatized beginning 2023. Council Oliver read through each section of the amendment for proposal number 94. Colonel Desmond Marion County Sheriff's Office stated that Sheriff Leighton is in support of the proposal and the amendment. He said that is understanding that part of the amendment limits the employees of the sheriff's department to supervising, guarding, and processing the inmates. Council Crider moves, seconded by Council Coats, to amend the amendment by making Marion County Sheriff's Office consistent throughout the amendment. Council Oliver's motion to amend carried by vote of 10 to 0. Council Crider's motion to amend carried by the vote of 10 to 0. And Council Evans stated that in the amendment, the date of January 1, 2023, had been crossed out and replaced with, quote, "When the new jail facility is constructed and fully operational," end quote. So therefore, this ordinance will go into effect whenever that year is operational. Council Coats moves, seconded by Council Oliver, to send proposal number 94 to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation. Motion carried by vote of 9 to 1, with Council Feaster casting negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Okay, the motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from fellow councilors? Council Fister.
Thank you, Mr. President. And yes, I was the lone no vote in committee. And the reason for my vote is because this doesn't begin until 2023. I've been in connection with the process of the jail all along, and I've not heard any intention of privatizing anything. And so for this to go way into the future, I felt might be tying the hands of future council members. And so that's the reason for my negative vote. I don't anticipate any privatization of it at all. But why not leave the future to the future? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. To address that concern, I think the important component of this is that because it has been maintained that it would be publicly run by the city, all we're doing is codifying into the ordinance what the anticipation and practice will be going forward. Future councils can always repeal this if they feel that they need to do that, but the public process, the promises and the guarantees made by this administration to this council, the people's elected body, maintain that that public process should also take place, should we want to privatize it in the future.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Seeing all the comments, we'll proceed to the board for a vote. Council Jackson. Council Mowry. All right, the proposal carries 18 to 4. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 95, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 95 through 97. Are you sure? Are you sure you don't want me to go through these one at a time? Thank you. Proposal number 95 authorizes intersection controls at Keystone Lakes driveway and way and Villa Avenue in District 21. Proposal 96 authorizes speed limit reduction of 25 miles per hour in the Meridian Meadows subdivision in District 23. And proposal number 97 authorizes parking restrictions on Georgia Street between Capitol Avenue and Pennsylvania Street in District 16. Council Oliver moves, seconded by Council Crider, to send proposals 95 through 97 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. I so move.
Council Oliver. Council Scales. All right, the proposals carry with a vote of 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 98, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson. I'm sorry. Rules in Public Policy. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 98 amends the code to split the Community Affairs and Education Committee into two separate committees. Luckily, I only have six pages of notes to read to the council this evening. Chair Osley stated in committee that the goal of creating this standalone committee is to strengthen cooperation among our city and our schools in Marion County, along with building new bridges to private enterprise and institutions of higher learning, stating that this move is not a luxury but a necessity. Councilor Johnson provided an overview of goals and objectives. I will not share those again tonight. I've shared those with all the councilors earlier this week. Council Coats stated that while he agrees with everything, Chair Osley and Council Johnson stated in their presentations that he wondered why the current committee would not just meet more often to tackle the items presented. Chair Osley stated that his intention is to have two separate tracks, one to indicate that the council has a commitment to education by itself and that there are a number of other issues in our community that will get more attention as they go forward. Councilor Osley, President Osley stated that education is key to social mobility and would like to send a signal out to the community that taking education credibly seriously means a greater focus and allowing the Community Affairs Committee to pick up steam on other issues. Councilor Gray moves, seconded by Council McQuillan, to send proposal number 98 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from fellow councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for a vote. And the proposal carries 22 to 0. The next item, there's no business under special service district councils. There is no business under new business. And we will proceed now to announcements and adjournment. Councilor Fister.
Thank you so very much, Mr. President. And I promise to be brief. If there's anyone left watching, my annual job fair opens tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. We have 65 companies. Each of those companies have to have at least 15 job openings to fill in order to participate. So there are literally hundreds of job openings. So please, if you're in line for a job, if you need a job, or if you want to get a better job, come see us tomorrow, 10 o'clock at Lakeview Church, 47 Beachway Drive. Big church, you can see from 465 between Rockville Road and 10th Street. So we'll have four hours of jobs, jobs, jobs. Come see us. Thank you.
Council Fister, you access it off of what street?
You can get there either from Rockville or from 10th Street on Beachway Drive. Beachway Drive parallels 465 between those two arteries.
Very good. Thank you very much. The doctor agenda for this meeting of the council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Council McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Council McQuillan, in memory of Major General Ronald Edward Brooks and Dorothy M. Oldham. By Council Osley, in memory of Van Bartow. By Council McHenry, in memory of Ed Flum. By Councilors Cordy, Adamson, Crider, McHenry, Ray, and Coats, in memory of Donald Donnie Griffin. By Council Cordy, in memory of George Martis, Michael B. Staten Jr., and Diane Jean Shirley. By Council Adamson, in memory of Francis Haskett and John Jack Leroy Jenkins. By Council Feaster, in memory of Ron Dix and Harold Plummer. By Council Westler, in memory of Kenneth R. Green. By Council Jackson, in memory of Malaysia Robson, Maggie Wardine Oda, and Lawrence Moore. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City-and-County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask to support the fellow councilors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Council McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and requests are ordered. Hearing no further motions, we're adjourned.